Okay, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. We're gonna stand, have the pledge allegiance and I'm gonna ask Alderman, Ms. Demby, if she'll lead us in prayer after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we are so grateful to you for this day and for this opportunity. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed. We thank you for allowing us to come to this appointed place at this appointed time. We trust, Lord, that your guidance, the Holy Spirit will guide us in everything that we do and say. We ask this in Jesus's name as we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here. The first thing we're gonna do is have roll call.
Town of Vidalia Board of Aldermen roll call for the regular meeting of the mayor and board of Aldermen dated October the 12th, 2021. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Demby.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman Probst.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Mayor let the record show that a form of the board is present and accounted for.
All right, thank you. You have in front of you the minutes from previous meetings? Are there any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I so move.
Move by Alderman Demby. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, next thing we have is public comments on our current agenda items. If anybody'd like to make a comment on our agenda items, if you're on the agenda, that's not necessary. You will maybe be able to deliberate later, but if there's anybody in the public have a public comment on any of the agenda items, this would be a time that you want to comment on them. We will certainly, you know, entertain any comments. Sure, absolutely, yeah.
I just wanna say that we have, you know, we've been battling this canal behind our house for twenty something years. Mr. John's come look at it, you've come look at it, my mayor's come look at it, Brett's not come look at it, everybody's stretched their hand for twenty years, but we've got to do something. We've all had to spend money for the five seashells to keep the sculpture, the possums, the sketas, though, you can't keep that for a lifetime.
Right.
I'm paying a thousand dollars on these little apples out in our yard, just so our grandkids can go out for thirty grand. I can't even handle that part, because the sketas are even, they have little dogs, the sketas eat them up. But, I, it's just time for us, might as well do something instead of what we can't do and think that we can't get back there.
Well, that's.
Those ruts, they have been there for years, and that's from years ago, kids riding before they were back there, and tearing it up. Those kids don't walk a little on the street, they're probably grown now, but that's where those ruts come from. It wasn't city trucks, city equipment, it was kids. And those ruts have never, ever been gone, they can not leave nowhere. It's the same ruts that was there for years ago. So, we're just begging for something to finally be done, because those sketas are terrible. You know, a few years ago, it was probably before you started serving your bus, but behind our chopper, that's a possum or what's now, not once, but twice.
Yeah.
You know, and we all have grandkids on that street, and some of them have little kids. I know Larry's neighbor, I don't know how much they had to spend to clean the weeds out of the ditch behind our house. City is fine with all these citizens for not mowing their grass. This is city grass that hasn't been mowed in years.
Right.
Ten years ago, I used to mow everything, probably five to eight houses on both sides.
And we're gonna. Which street is this? That's what, it's behind Ellender and Viking Street.
There's a canal between our.
And, and it's, it's, there's really no excuse, and look, for it to stay where it's at now, it's gonna continue to be that way because of seepage. Y'all know it stepped there during, and we've had some.
But, you know, we don't see because you know, yard or anything, it's just.
I understand, but that's why we can't get in there to cut it, because you lose your machines. Leah tell you, there's no way you can get anything down in there to cut it unless you use, but we're.
That's why I'm saying let's get a solution.
And that's why we're addressing it tonight, so we're wanting to, we want to get it, we're wanting to get it fixed and do whatever it takes. So, you're on agenda tonight, we're gonna talk about it, and this is one of the things we're gonna talk about later, and I will, I'll let Brent pick that up, but yeah, I appreciate your comments, really big. Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment on number eight, the sidewalk. First, I wanna thank you for the stump, the favorite stump over there, you know, that finally that's gone.
It's gone.
But, I didn't realize how bad the sidewalk is until then we moved the stump, because the stump hid the sidewalk. It looked like a little road ghost. So, will you move, Lee, will you move Waldorf Street to the top of the list for the stump for a little old lady fall down and work here?
We're, we're gonna address the sidewalks here in just a little bit.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all right, let's move on into our agenda. First thing we have is Ms. Deborah Moke, our CPA, is gonna give us a financial report.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of August 31st, 2021, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the two months ending August 31st, 2021, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all department heads and Aldermen for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of 12.1 million, including restricted funds of 10 million in the hydro fund and 856,000 in the sales tax fund. Investments are 3.9 million with the hydro reserve fund, including 2.4 million of that, and the general fund has 1.5 million in a CD. Total assets are 42.3 million, total liabilities are 9.1 million. For our fund balance, combined fund balance of 33.2 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the two months ending August 31st, 2021 indicates combined revenues of 6.8 million, total expenditures of 5.7 million, for a change in net position of a positive 1.17 million. The hydro royalty amount for the month of August amounts to 1.3 million with a total cost of power paid by the town of 680,000 for a net profit of 635,000 for the one month. Sales tax revenue for the month of August was up from the same time last year and higher than the previous month. Overall revenues are at 15% of the total budget and expenses are at 15% of the total budget. The overall net change in net position is at 12%, which is less than expected. Hydro rebates approved in the amount of 2.5 million are not included in these financial statements. Next month, the net change in position will decrease for most of the year due to the rebates. We are hopeful to have the rebates go out before Thanksgiving again this year. We are still working with FEMA to recover emergency work and debris removal costs caused by the 2021 storm. The town is expecting to receive $267,500 reimbursement. Today, roughly approximately 3.9 million has been borrowed for the substation construction to cover materials, engineering costs, and legal fees incurred. The Aldermen have been notified before the draws are made so as they can be aware of where the money is being spent. The town has saved lots of money by procuring the materials prior to the pandemic. The appraisals are complete for the right of ways and negotiations are pending for the acquisitions. The town has received approximately 705,000 of the 1.4 million allocated to the town from the American Rescue Plan Act. This money will show up in the September financial statements. We have put it in a CD for the time being. The remaining 705,000 will be sent the following year. The money hasn't been deposited, well, that's what I said, the money must be spent over four years or returned. We are working with our engineers to determine the best possible uses of the money. The auditors are scheduled to come Monday, October 18th, to begin their field work.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Has anybody got any questions on council? Thank you, Deborah, as usual, you're doing outstanding job and appreciate it and all the work you do. Okay, we're gonna move on to number two, board discussion and vote on approval of occupational license applications. First one we have is just cuts. James Kennedy and Janice Kennedy on 501 and a half, South Spruce Street is a barber shop. Are they here? Neither one's here? Okay, is there any questions? I hear motion.
I've got a question on it from a resident who wants to know is, is it gonna be a commercial business in the residential area and how is the parking gonna be?
The only thing I know is that James and Janice don't live there, so I don't know, I don't know where this is. I don't know if it's a commercial building or.
No, 501 Spruce is not in a commercial, it's in a residential area.
I, I don't know where, I had, I don't know where that's at.
Well, it's on Spruce Street, 501 and a half Spruce Street, South Spruce.
Okay, has somebody expressed a concern about it?
Yes, about it being a, just like in a commercial business, which if it's a bar shop, you got parking, you got things that are involved with a commercial business, and is it gonna be a problem? And do the residents have a say so?
Because I know, I know there's several shops in Vidalia that people have in their backyard or something where people come and do, what did we do in those instances?
Well, there's instances where people complained about parking on those too.
Okay.
I mean, I know that's happened before.
I mean, y'all.
Because of the fact you get five, six cars in there for different people that's coming into those beauty shops.
I mean, if y'all want to count.
That's something that may need to be looked at by the planning commission or.
Or if you wanted, if you want to table it till next month?
Well, I make the motion we table it. I know both of those people and I don't know what they got going on, because they didn't reach out me prior to the meeting to explain, so I don't want to just shut them down.
Right, I mean, I'm not saying shut them down, I'm saying we need to look at it and see feasibility of its parking in that area, and I don't, I don't know the parking area. I mean, they may have a spot in the back, it's a half, so it may be a spot in the back of that yard if they got the parking, I don't know.
Motion made to table? Any more discussion?
Well, I was gonna say, when he came to the office, made the thing, asking about that, I think it's gonna be more like of an appointment type deal, it's not gonna be.
So, he'll control his parking?
You know, it's not gonna be that thing. And the reason I did that is because it is business in a residential area.
Yeah.
So, he didn't, didn't think that there would be a problem, and he's not gonna have a sign or anything like that. I think he's gonna work strictly.
Appointment.
On appointments. It's not gonna be, come as, you know.
He's already told you that thing?
Yeah, when we, when we had a discussion in the office, when someone comes into the office and applies, I always try to ask.
If you feel like he's disgusted enough, I don't have a problem with that, I can tell the person.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I'm not trying to stir a pot or nothing, but I mean, Robert or, somebody's got a business back there or in the neighborhood.
There's several, there's several.
My business is already in a pre-existing.
Yeah.
It's pre-existing.
Robert Catmore.
Yeah.
Business is right downstairs.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm saying, I know there's others, so, and I know Robert too, and I think they're great folks, I don't think they would, you know, if he talked to.
But if you discuss that with him, I don't have a problem with it as far as appointment only type thing, and not, and being a half, I thought maybe he had, maybe he had parking in the back of the house, you know.
I haven't talked to him, so I take the comment anyway, I don't know, but.
That was brought my attention before I came in here just a little while ago.
So, motion's on the, on the.
Well, I'll remove my motion and just go and make the motion to approve if he stopped to adjourn and it's gonna be by appointment only.
So, you rescind your motion?
Correct, correct.
Okay, he's rescinded his motion, he made a motion to accept just cuts. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Did you say yet?
No, I would say that I would think that would be Tommy's decision since he.
No, it's fine. I mean, I agree, if you talk to him about that, it's fine.
Okay, Ms. Demby made the second, so, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, move on. Now, we have, number three is, we have the board discussion and vote to approve American Cruise Line docking lease agreement. As you'll remember, we have already approved this back on February the 5th at the council meeting. However, the, one of the things we had to do was the Riverfront Authority had to convene and them also, there was some statutes that we had to follow with appraisals and surveys and that thing, it's been kind of a lengthy process, and they've done everything now, so the next thing statute called for is since that, we just had to ratify and approve the docking lease agreement since the Riverfront Authority has done their, their work to approve this. And I think this is gonna be exciting thing for our town, really looking forward to this, and they're ready to go. They're, they're probably watching this live now, ready to start sending people getting work, getting, go to work, so. Do I hear a motion we accept?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. If y'all are listening, Charlie, y'all, y'all get busy, we're looking forward to seeing you. Okay, number, number four on our agenda is board discussion and vote to approve an assignment of a lease between Twin Oaks Holding LLC and the town of Vidalia and Vidalia Riverfront Development District. Well, it's, Twin Oaks is looking at, and I was gonna ask Dr. White if he wanted to speak to the council or if you'd like, we're gonna actually come to the microphone so it can, it can hear us.
Excuse me, Dr. John White, losing my voice, I've been talking all day to patients, please excuse that. So, I'm here on behalf of the owners of the River Park Medical Center to request approval of an amendment to our land lease and also approve our ability to assign our lease to a tentative buyer that we have of River Park. I'm not able to, because of non-disclosure agreement, I can't tell you who this company is, but it's a nationally known, well-respected medical real estate group that has offered us a bid. We've been here at River Park now for 17 years, and we've had a great relationship with all the tenants down here and the, and the citizens and the folks running the city, and we've been very thankful for what you've done for us over the years. Literally, you saved us from disaster when that flood occurred, and we'll never forget that as long as we're at River Park. During this past 17 years, we've become a respected outpatient medical and surgical center that I think is quite unique for a rural area like ours. We feel as much a part of this community as any other business does. We support the schools, public services, and the local government, but most importantly, we provide quality medical and surgical care to the citizens of Concordia Parish as well as the surrounding parishes, not just over here, but the counties in Mississippi as well. We have now specialists that include ear, nose, and throat doctors, we have gastroenterologists, we have an active pain management program going on, we have three ophthalmologists that practice at our facility, we have a general surgeon, a dermatologist, and internal medicine as well as nurse practitioners there now. So, our building has actually lately attracted a lot of attention, a lot of interest in some of these companies that acquire real estate. So, we received several requests for a portfolio that we put together, and we accepted a bid from one of the most desirable companies to execute basically what we call a sale-lease transaction. We sell the building, we remain as less C, so the doctors will be there, the same doctors you're used to seeing, and hopefully, if this thing's successful, we'll continue to attract new doctors to our facility. So, we're in the final weeks of completing this sale, and, and this, this is sort of a key time right now for us. The land lease that we have provides us full rights to assign our lease with approval of the city and the Riverfront District. The new owner is a much larger and more substantial tenant for the Riverfront District, bringing additional capital and resources to the property and community. If this transaction is successful, Vidalia and River Park Medical Center will have a stronger and long-lasting legacy. So, what we've got so far is that the new owners have also agreed to all the current stipulations in our land lease, which I must say is pretty extensive and specifically points out responsibilities that a less C must have. We have, the only thing that there was pullback on from the company that was, had offered a bid was, that's section, it's the 17th paragraph of the lease, and I think I put copies of that in the, sent them to the Alder people. So, what this amendment basically states is, okay, well, we agree to, you know, the board will agree to the assignment of initial lease to this company. They would like it set up so that they don't have to, every time the lease is reassigned, that they have to make an appearance before the Riverfront District and then before the board themselves. Typically, the way these scenarios work is that they will be our owner for a period of time, and then that may be, then they may be sold to another company down the line, but what that does is it gives us years of being able to use that building as a medical facility, and that's what it's dedicated to do. It won't be a casino, it won't be a restaurant, it won't be a nail salon, it's gonna be a medical office and continue to function as such. So, let's see. As I mentioned, we had, we had two meetings with the Riverfront District, and they gave us their unanimous support in what our project involved, and there was a bit of a caveat there that pending what the Board of Aldermen decided to do this evening. The other issue that I know people have been considered, been worried about a few things if this happens, so there are, there's a green space in front of us where the gazebo is, and that's part of what's going to this new company, and so we wanted to maintain that as a green space and have events out there, and so sort of as an act of good faith, we negotiated with this company, and they want to continue that relationship that we have. We have another sort of handshake relationship that involves a parking lot, so that if there's a special event at the center over there that the parking can be done over there, crews will clean it up, and we've, we've been under that sort of arrangement for many years now. And just like the, what I call the gazebo agreement, they're also agreeing to carry on with that same parking lot agreement that we had. So, another point that I've seen concerns about is, well, gosh, if we have this lease being renewed over and over and over again, we lose control of everything. So, the important thing to remember is that you all, the city owns that property, and you can lease it, you know, but it, when it comes back to it and owns that property, and that property could come back to the city at the end of the lease, of course, it's a ninety-something year lease, but it will always be the city's property. If the particular less C defaults on his responsibilities to the lease, the city grabs it back, they get the, they get the land back and they get the building as, as well. So, let me just summarize my final thoughts here about what we'd like to accomplish and achieve. First of all, River Park is gonna be sold to this nationally-known medical real estate group. To make this happen, we asked for a vote to accept the assignment and also accept the amendment that must be approved by the Alderman. River Park will continue to function as a medical facility, no funny stuff going on, it says it specifically on lease, that's what it's for, so it'll be dedicated medical surgical facility. River Park will continue to be a loyal taxpayer, the building will be professionally maintained and managed by the buyer, existing agreements to use the gazebo and green area as well as the parking lot will continue as is. The mission of River Park and what we all adhere to is that we'll continue to deliver high-quality medical and surgical care to this area. This building and its services will help attract doctors to the area which we badly need. The lease document has, the lease document that was originally done for all this has very specific wording, as I said, that really holds the less C to the, his feet to the fire, so I think we're quite protected as that goes. And as I mentioned, the city does not lose the property, but can it, if they can retain it with, with the building, not just the property, but the building itself, if there's a default or the lease expires. So, with that, I'll stop and ask the board if they have any questions for me.
I got a question. It had the, in here, the, they agreed to all of it except for the, about the coming back for the leasing being approved. What's the big deal with that?
The current leasing that's, that's gonna be the owner?
Mm-hmm.
Or are they talking about future assignment there?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's two concerns. First of all, it is our, it is our right in the lease as River Park Medical Center to assign it to somebody else with the approval of the Board of Aldermen. Then, you get a company like the one that we're dealing with, they like that, but it's customary in their practice that this lease may get assigned down the line to others, and they want that to be a streamlined procedure because, you know, they don't want to get politically held up or what have you to, you know, to come in and take over that leasing position. So, I think that's, I guess that's what, what's being discussed or there's concerns about.
So, the possibility of the, the person that wants to lease it now, if he decides he doesn't want it, he wants to be able to let y'all sublease that to someone else without the approval of the, of the town and the Riverfront?
Let me think, so you're asking if they decide they don't like it, they want to go ahead and sublease it to somebody else?
No.
I don't think they have that ability to do that. They could assign the whole lease, which requires the tracks of land too, to the next group.
Let me, just for clarity, there's actually four tracks were involved in the original lease with the doctors. There was a track, one, two, three, and four. One was being the area known as, which I think the doctors them have maintained, which is the green area between the bridge.
And the parking lot.
The parking lot. That's, that's, that's number one. That was actually an option for them to acquire later, but that was not in the original. The two properties that were originally involved that they actually leased was the gazebo area and where the hospital and parking lot exist now. That was in the lease. There was an option in there that they had to exercise within seven years, I think, or eight years, where there was, there was a track, a track one and track four, which is where Promise is now, that they could get, but that expired where Promise was, and later some other, another doctor's group bought it, but they did exercise that option to buy the green area between the, the bridge and the parking lot. So, they actually own currently those three tracks on that side of the river. The doctors are gonna maintain that track number one, okay? The part of the lease they're wanting to, to let this group buy basically, and is the gazebo and the hos, and the hospital area, so, but it's not gonna involve that. Prior to this, we did talk to the doctor, he assured us that we could continue this arrangement, which y'all actually approved, to go into an agreement with them, to have a joint use, and we would indemnify them against anybody and get insurance on the gazebo area, because we do want to use it to decorate for Christmas and actually make it a really nice space to make our Riverfront experience really nice. And the only, when George and I were sitting there for our final thing, and Dr. White will confirm this, the group said, no, we're not, we're not gonna do that. So, we pulled back and, and really said, well, you know, that's something we really need to consider, because we're not, we're just giving up anything to do with some of the more nicer areas, and also, our convention center does need this parking spot, we won't have big events for overflow. And once he assured me of those things, the only point of contention now, and this is the only point of contention, is whoever they sell to, if they, if they want to reassign that lease, that lease, they do not have to come back to the town and to, or to the Riverfront Authority. That's the only point of contention that we're here talking about tonight, to be honest with you, and.
So, it's the doctor's group that would be reassigning?
The doctor's group that would be reassigned?
No, not, you're talking about the, the green space between the bridge and, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, what I'm saying is, okay, the reassigning of the lease, if we, if we, okay, all right, who's responsible for the resigning of the lease?
Well, you guys are the ones that approve it or not. And if you, you, it's, first of all, it's, it's in, written in the lease that we have perfectly, it's perfectly legitimate and legitimate for us to assign it to somebody else. The caveat being that any tracks in that lease must go to the next assignee. So, that's the two tracks we talked about, one and two. What we want to do is enable this company to assign it down the line. They want, they're, they're not gonna sublease it, they're just gonna, they, all they can do is assign it down the line. And that ensures that there'll be a similar company folding it into their portfolio, which will allow, again, continued management and upkeep they do, that they take. They do, they take care of the parking lots, they take care of the roofs, they take care of electric. So, I'm tired of managing the building. Now, I've, I've sort of become the default mechanical man around that building. And I'm kind of tired of doing that. So, I'm looking forward to a professional group coming in and keeping it up. I, I brag about our structure all the time. And I think it's one of the most magnificent buildings that we have in this area. And it's, we want it to last and we want to, we want to, you know, we want to retire from it at some point in time and get new doctors in there. And I think it's a fantastic attraction for the parish, I really do.
Me, me, especially with legal matters, when it comes to legal.
No, he had his hands up. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, when it comes to legal matters like this, I, I kind of like to refer to counsel and see if this is normally done or is it, is this just like an exception or? Just kind, kind of guide me through the legal process. Because I wouldn't want to just make a. And I, and I want to help please Dr. White because he knows I got a file up there about that thing. But, but I want to make sure it's, you know, legal and everything's.
The response to that question is, the terms of leases are in accordance with the needs of the parties. That's their, their, their decision as to what they're going to agree to. But in this case, it's, it's written in this lease that they can assign it and the town has to approve it, as does the Riverfront Commission. So, I mean, there's no, there's no standard in my limited access to these high-power leases as to whether they give rights to let people approve it or whether they don't want to do that. In this case, it's not a case of want to or not, it's in the lease. So, we're varying that thing, that's what you'd be doing. So, allow them not to have to come back to you.
So, basically, it'd be a new lease?
In my opinion, it would be. You know, you got, you're going to, you're not going to just assign that lease. You're going to change the lease and then assign it.
Right, there's an amendment that's, I gave everybody a copy of. And that's what we would like for, that's, that's the second part of the amendment. Not just to have the permission to, for us to assign it and then it'd be assigned down the line. But they actually said, and they didn't just say, we don't like that. They said, well, here's what we suggest. And that's what that amendment is that was enclosed in the material that I sent to you. So, that would be the only change in the lease. And, you know, leases, this lease didn't change for, I don't know, probably seventeen years. But leases are changeable if you vote the change in. So, they want that to be a part of the lease as it's assigned down the line. Again, it's going to be to similar companies like this.
But the one thing I'll say is all the terms are still the same.
Yes.
I mean, they got to do what they got to do.
Right.
You know, hold everything as it is.
That's right.
And we default, they default.
Right. All of that remains the same.
And it has to be a hospital entity, is what you're saying, again.
So, I imagine, my question is, if you would not get the, the vote to change the lease with those doctors pull out because of their reasoning, would they not want to go through with the deal and keep it the way it is, the way the verbiage is stating at this time?
Okay, so you're asking if they didn't get that okay from the Board of Alderman?
Correct.
That's a possibility, that that deal just would not happen, a distinct possibility.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the, the problem with returning to the, for board approval again? Let's just say that down the road, ten years from now.
Mm-hmm.
It has to be, will be, assigned to a new doctor's group. What is the hangup with board approval again?
I think it, it, it may shy some people off of the deal. And it's, it's become such a customary practice and the way they manage those situations that, that, you know, they just, they just don't run into that as an issue really, like we, we have here. So, and I understand the city's stance on this. And I, and I guess my, my response is, again, you, you got a very well-written overall lease that's going to keep you from, you know, running into a bad lessee. You've got ways to get rid of that particular group. And you can also, and you also, you know, the land, again, we're not selling the land, we're leasing it. So, it's still the city's property. And actually, the building could be the city's property at some point.
Those national companies, I mean, they don't want to have to send somebody back down here from New York to stand in front of the group and say, we fixing to do this. And they, they just, that's how they operate.
Yeah, I really didn't think that was a good idea. I mean, they probably could have done that. I have a liaison that I work with through this company and he's a very nice guy. But, you know, I know everybody, pretty much everybody. And I figured, hey, let me just appeal to the board and see what they have to say. But, yeah, this is a company that has over four billion dollars in medical real estate assets. And I'd be pretty proud to be, be with it.
Well, I know, I, I shall say that I wasn't originally on board, I guess, when this deal seventeen years ago was put together. So, I made a phone call to former Mayor Copeland to pick his brain pertaining to this matter. And I, I will say for him, it was a, it was a go. So, that, that kind of got me thinking. But I did have questions and concerns, the same ones that the other Alderman had as well. That's why I reached out to him, because he was here to actually make the deal.
Mm-hmm.
I call for a vote. Back, back to my point, man.
Okay.
That I made before. Actually, there will be subleases. Because the lease will be assigned and then they're going to sublease space back to the doctors who practice now, as I understand.
Well, what we do, yeah, we do like we have with the entities now. There's, you know, Imaging has a lease. But these are leases that have been in place that assure that there's a, somebody in a spot there. So, I've got, I've got a lease that I pay and so does Imaging and so does the Surgery Center and Dr. Tillman. Yeah, so there's individual office leases going on. It has nothing to do with the overall lease.
That estoppel agreement talks about the town approving subleases in place.
Not Eric didn't, Eric, who's our attorney, didn't, he didn't mention anything to me about that. So, I think he was in the process after his discussion with you to see if they could make that estoppel just a, a bit more clear. I mean, for them, it's routine language and stuff.
Eric didn't do it. He said, the attorneys for the proposed new lessee prepared that document.
I'm sorry?
The attorneys for the proposed new lessee prepared that document.
That's correct.
And I just told him, it's, it's just way, way too much for us, you know.
Way too much, way too much what?
Made too much of the words in there.
Oh, too many words, okay.
There's a lot of conditions in this estoppel, Doctor, that, that were actually, you know, like, like counsel said, there really should be between the lender or, like a lender and, and the other group. Not so much that the town and, and Riverfront Committee has to sign off on. And he did point out something, there were some things, things that actually altered, you know. Is that correct, counsel? I mean, that we talked about, it kind of altered what we're talking about. And without, by us putting our signature on that, we're agreeing to those things, we had to be very careful. As a matter of fact, I would think counsel would tell you that that's probably an agreement we wouldn't sign or agree to. Is that what, that's what my, I understand your consensus was, is that correct? As it's currently written? As it's currently writ- currently written, you wouldn't advise us to sign it?
I wouldn't propose doing it as currently written and Eric says he's going to work on it.
I, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said, I, I wouldn't want to approve it as written. Is that on, is this on? Oh, okay, yes. I was saying, I wouldn't want to approve it as written. It's way too many words and it poses a lot of.
Well, is there, is there?
Impresses on them.
Interpretation, because we can, I can maybe get Eric.
What I'm saying, he's, he, we talked about it and he said he's going to work on it and send me something to look at. So, but I hadn't got it yet.
Well, he's pretty busy.
Yeah, well. But we have to do it one way or the other.
I don't know that you have to do it, but I guess you're saying we need to do it now, but.
Well, I say, I'm not, I'm not going to approve it till, till we do it.
I call for a vote, the town to vote. Discussion's over in my opinion.
Okay, well, I, counsel had a question about the estoppel. There's another agreement in there that needs to be signed and I want to make sure we got that to record. So, all right, Alderman Probst is calling for a vote. So, the motion is, do you have one to make a motion? What's your motion?
Make a motion, we accept.
All right, okay, motion made that we accept, are here second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, second, any more discussion from counsel? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
There's a motion made by Alderman Probst to assess the lease between Tan Oaks Holding and Town of Vidalia and Vidalia Riverfront Development District. Second by Alderman Gardner, Alderman Betts. Alderwoman Denby.
I didn't hear that.
I didn't say anything yet.
Oh, okay.
Alderwoman Denby?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
I was just wanting more information and more legalized on it because I don't see any attorneys sitting at this table right here. The only one I see is over there. I mean, at this time, I would say not. But I do want it to work. I just want to make sure the, the, the town is protected.
I'm going to.
Pardon?
I'm going to.
Alderman?
I have some reservations about this. And so, I'm, I'm still concerned about, about the lease, so I'll vote no.
Okay, vote for three to two in favor?
Correct.
Okay, all right, motion passes, all right, Doctor. Okay, all right, thank y'all very much. Okay, next thing we have is the Vidalia Recreational, Recreational Board are here to discuss some of the things that they would like to maybe us to start considering for the future. Come on, come on, Coach.
I take this off, I had all three.
You, you sure may.
Take all three of them. Was outside there, was Alderman Denby, they thought I was coming to recruit a football team. Britt tried, I couldn't get into three-point stands, Burris couldn't throw three yards, so I just squibbed that. You wouldn't be a cheerleader, so.
Well, I was going to say, we'd make a motion to have a statue of those varsity players.
We come before you and I'm, I'm accompanied tonight by Glenn Perry, Lou Glenn, Jasan, and Coach Cale Davis. These are two board members also that come along with me tonight. As you know, we come representing this, the, our Recreation District Three. And just to let you know, you know, we operate simply, totally off of taxes. You know, we have no revenues coming in, you know, nothing, nowhere. So, basically, we have been looking in, in our, our September, August and September meeting, we met and we discussed some things that we would like for you to help us with if, you know, if, if funds become available. Because we, thanks to, I always want to say brother, thanks to Mr. Perryloo, you know, the children's pavilion over there with the playground, that was over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Thanks to Mr. Perryloo, he was able to write a grant, matching grant. And we saved a little funds. We have to save a long time to match. So, once we did, you know, we're putting it to use. And what we are actually, actually asking is if you at some time, you'll come along, come around and find something laying around, you know, that you don't need, just, just call us. We, we can use it. These are some things that we have, in that, in that meeting, we discussed. Number one, we want a pavilion back behind the, where the playground is. And that pavilion would provide for families who want to come out and have a picnic or just to socialize, family type thing, with a barbecue grill, et cetera. Have not looked at, to the second thing is a walking trail. On a walking trail back there, you know, for old folks like us who can walk and not worry about being knocked in the head or something like that, but just a real upstate walking trail. The third thing is, those of you who have, who came through here on the weekend, you saw, you would have seen the soccer league that's just started. You saw this whole area was covered. So, we would like, thirdly, for lights on that, on that area. And the fourth thing is kind of a community type thing. And the old coaching me that really jumps out. Some kind of way, that football field, that street in front of that football field is, that's terrible. That's terrible. This is Vidalia, you know, it, it represents us, you know, it don't represent, I'll start to call some towns name, but it won't do that, but don't represent anybody else. And if you, would, would you leave here tonight, if you just ride through there, if your car don't get lost in one of those holes before you get through it, you'll see what I'm talking about. But we certainly, certainly would like some help on those things. And we will be available. I have not, not any feasibility, feasibility studies as far as cost or anything at this time. I just talked to the mayor the other day and just, I wanted to present you with these things. Like I said, we, as a board, we do not have, the only income we have, and as you know, we're paying a hefty note on that, on this area over here, out of that money that we get from the tax. It's pretty big. So, these are some things that we wanted to present to you. We know we not looking for them tomorrow, the next day. But at some point in time, when you come into that, we'd like for you to entertain that and help us in any way you can. You have any questions?
Anybody have any questions, Coach?
I, I guess what I'll say is, I know when the Beautification Committee came at our last meeting, they had presentation, which you said you didn't give like bids on how much, what it's going to cost. I would like to see figures.
Okay, well, we, we haven't got that far yet. Yeah, I don't, you know, I'm just a member of the board at this point in time. And when I, when, you know, when the time comes, I'm sure we can get some quotes and bids or whatever from someone. Because I have no idea on, on building or that, you know, I'm a.
Coach, I think they're great ideas. I think that, you know, in the, hopefully, I wish, I wish we could have put this together for our public meetings with the hydro funds. But this next year, I promise you, I, I promise I'll work with the rec board if we stay in contact with one another. Because this is for a public purpose, for our, for our people. Those fields over there, that is probably the largest gathering place of more citizens and more people in this area than any place in the world. And that's families together, coming together and being together and doing things. And I think we should do as a city, try to do everything that we can to make sure that they're, they have great facilities. And I think everything you got listed here is, is something that we should consider and try to help y'all achieve. That's, I'm just giving my opinion. And I've been, I've been trying to get that straight between the, the field.
And we, we would like to thank the city for, you know, the help you give us in, in taking care of the facility over here. I think, you know, if you would just look, and we do some kind of survey, I don't know how you do it, but as far as the people that come in and the money that's spent over there, it, it's tremendous. And I know it's seasonal, I know it. You know, it's baseball season and thing, soccer seasons. But you, you just look at the money, the gas, the hotels, the food. I, I don't know how you would estimate that, but if you look at it, I, I'd be, it would be tremendous.
There's a baseball tournament there this week.
Yeah, it'd probably be one of our biggest and largest means of revenue in coming into, coming into Vidalia.
But we'll be glad to work with you as a, as a, as a town and municipality and look at, you know, cooperative endeavor agreements with, with the rec board to achieve some of these things. The street, the, the street between the school and the field would be a school board thing that we would have to enter into them. Of course, that would all have to be approved by counsel. But I don't, I don't think there's anything here that we wouldn't like to see, that, see happen, so.
I, I'd like to ask, have you gone to the school board about that? I mean, they got money too, you know.
We, we.
Big money, they got big money.
Alderman Probst, I think, you know, we've been everywhere.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, they got big money, they just don't want to spend it for a thing.
You know, I could have big money, but will I turn it loose there, Alderman Probst?
That's what I'm talking about. The pressure has to be put on them too, because that is their entity over there. That's not us, that's theirs.
I, I know that, I know that.
But again, that's the other thing I'm going to say that I, I'll have to say, we have a lot of people come in over here to their recreation park. I've been through this with the board, rec board, I've been through this with the city, I've been through it all. I'm not complaining, I'm just saying. Part of that is, if we got our people involved, like we used to in the baseball programs and in the programs, parents worked, parents did. I'm not complaining, I'm just saying. Part of that is, if we got our people involved, like we used to in the baseball programs and in the programs, parents worked, parents did their part. They didn't send their kids up here and leave them and say, okay, we'll pick you up out of the wild. No, they worked concession stand, they worked umpiring, they were, there wasn't even an umpire over there sometimes this year. They couldn't get them. But parent, part of that come together stuff is parents getting involved, and that's not happening anymore, because parents don't get involved. Parents don't bring theirself up there, they bring their children up there. They leave their children, or they sit there maybe, but that's not happening. So, we're spending a lot of that money out like that. We have no control over, as far as I know, I don't know how y'all control those concession stands, but that's big money. I know it, because that's how they used to make it. Anybody that was in a baseball program knew, they could send their people to the world tournament and not have to go out and do fundraisers every weekend. That doesn't happen anymore, and that's bad, because that caused community involvement. That caused parent-children relationships that ain't happening anymore. So, that's where we need to start. That's just me talking, my outlook on it, because I'm old school, you see. That's where I was whenever we were coming up. The umpire, the coaches coached, they umpired the next game. We didn't have to hire an umpire. That was your responsibility as coach. All that was part of it, but not anymore. Our world today, as we always make excuses, it's different today. No, it's not different today. It's the attitude of the people that's different today. That's all I can say.
And I agree with you, because, you know, the business I'm in every day, parental involvement is a big thing, and if you could give an answer to that and all of the pros, I would certainly, I would certainly plant it and grow it.
It's called enabling. That's what we're doing. We're enabling the parents. It's pretty bad.
Mr. Marsalis, are you asking that the board look at hydro royalty money as a, a way of helping the recreation? Is that what you're asking? I, I said, are you asking tonight that the board look at hydro money, uh, to help the recreation?
That's what the money is, yes ma'am.
One, I do, I do want to clarify, one of the things we, one of the things we will probably do next year is a lot of things that we've had put on a list, because right now, the ordinance is not reflective of how we're doing the public meetings, but I want to get that more in line. How this is supposed to happen annually, uh, we're supposed to compile as a group of Alderman and, 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 and town, we're supposed to compile a list of some possible projects, and then have the public meetings and the public come in and consider, hey, we like these things and we don't like those things. And that's probably what it will look like next year. This year, we've asked, we pre, we, uh, we've asked the citizens to come in with us and us brainstorm, hey, what are some things we can put up? And we had those two meetings this year, and different things were brought up. Many people didn't show up. Uh, beautification and garden club showed up and were successful in doing something, some great things, and I would just encourage you next year, you know, that we'll compile some lists based on some things y'all said and some things people have said in the past, and compile a list and ask the people to come, and hey, this is what we'd like to see. And, and maybe have a dollar tag and price tag on it, and I'll work with you. I'll be glad to work with you on trying to put all that together.
Robert, I'll try to work on some prices, because I, I have no way of projecting, but I, I'll try to work on getting some.
Thank you. Hey, the other thing, I want to say is there, there's how many rec districts in this parish? How many rec districts in this parish?
Three.
Three, right?
Three, huh?
I think there's a fourth, but I think it's.
Come here.
All of them.
Ah, why wouldn't they? Ah, makes enough. That's where some money is too, right? What are they doing with all their money over here in Parity and Monterey?
Are you preaching to the choir?
Tell me about it.
Even across the bridge to the.
Yeah, oh yeah. That's where they need to be, kind of like, up here, on fees, you know, or, but nobody wants to do that, because we need to pay for it.
Coach, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next thing we have is, uh, discussion of plans to install covert in the area of Viking Street and Eller Street, and Brent's gonna talk a little bit about that. Uh, case, case come, of course, we put it on the agenda last time to discuss, and I'm gonna let you talk a little bit, but one of the things we're looking at is, uh, the, to correct the Bill Johnson flooding. All, right now, the preliminary engineering that we're doing with, especially with the slough area and all that, we're trying to address all of our areas that are, are subject, subjected to flood, is going to have to take that water from, uh, Lee and John, I mean, Lee and Road over there, down, uh, Lee and Road and cross Viking Street and empty into that ditch too. It's not gonna drain out that other way through the, through the courthouse. So, all that's being looked at, and we're looking at, uh, hopefully, culverts.
Yeah.
Because, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, um, Miss Stephanie had called me and, um, you know, I got, you and I rode over there, and it, it was, it was pretty bad. And, uh, as we were looking at it, uh, I just got to looking, and I, like I said, it's like with anything else, I like to ask the professionals or the engineers, can this, but it's just a idea. I got to looking, and so, would be nice if our backyard were just flat, they, they could cut it, maybe put a big covert in it, and, you know, put the drains where they need to go. But I was gonna ask Lee, or if we need to get an engineer, or, you know, I mean, is that, and I definitely wouldn't want to flood nobody else by, by doing that, you know, I just, tell me where I'm right or where I'm wrong, or if it can be done.
I mean, you're, uh, you're right about that. This has been, just like she said, it's been an issue. I've been here seventeen years, it's been an issue ever since I've been here. We've, uh, especially after the last six or seven years where the city's water, the river's been high, you know, because they're probably not drinking like it's supposed to be doing out in the river. But you're still gonna have an issue with city water, whether we fix that like that or not. And I've taken tractors in there myself, probably six or seven times this year, and we ended up two backhoe stuck, three tractor stuck, trying to get them all out, we finally get them all out, and it's just, like you were talking about, uh, the old wood has started in there, like a brush, and it just went downhill from there to the sea floor. And then now we got little grown, uh, cat tail growing in there, and we went in and sprayed it about four weeks ago, trying to kill some of it, and it's, it, I.
I also got people from both sides of the street, I think, throwing these over their fences.
That's usually.
You know, he's had that problem with the back door neighbor.
That is, that's been an issue, even all, all over town where people's backyard is the canal, they, that's where they throw their, they throw their. Yeah.
But I'm totally agreement with, uh, with getting the engineer and the study done and see if we can take all that water down to there with garbage, old woods, and, and, uh, top it up and fill it in.
Yeah, just so that the people on Viking Street's backyard butts up against, uh, Eller, I mean, just straight across.
So, I don't know if you could ever get it that level, but it would be, it would be better than where it is now. But we used to go in there, back when I started, we had inmate crews that would go in and block it, and we cut that, and it would just like the people y'all, they don't run that one out. And then once the water started riding and the old wood had run deep, the water could lean out, and that's where it just went down in from there.
We will certainly, we will certainly look at it and maybe make this a part of, uh, add on to, uh, maybe, uh, look at what it would cost them doing the cost estimate, what it would take to put a covert with, uh, catch basins in there to, to carry that drainage.
Yeah, we used to have a little lady, lived a couple houses down from me, she's down there, it's Peacock. I don't know if anybody even knew it was Peacock, but back in the day, when we were growing it on Viking Street, you'd be playing that deal. She'd come out there with a skillet.
Yeah, well, it is, it is, I think, close to where y'all live, it is really, really bad ruts. I mean, they're deep as four foot.
So, it's got to where people don't even want to move behind their fences and stuff back there, because it's like they, they feel like it's their big purpose.
Right.
I mean, we still have ours and ours, you know, three or four feet behind ours, but not everybody's.
Okay, well, I appreciate, I appreciate, and we will get to work on it, and we'll try to add that as, and add a change on what, what they're currently engineering to look at that area too, and see what the cost of it would be. Uh, now, in all honesty, when we deal with these things, it's not gonna happen in, in two or three months, I promise you, because it just takes time to get. Yeah, but just be, it does, I, I'm sorry, look, I wish we could fix it tomorrow, but it's just not that easy when you're dealing with.
But, but we. I definitely want an engineer to get involved, because I'd hate to fix their problem and flood the other three streets.
Well, you can't do that. If somebody, you'll throw water on somebody else if it's not.
I mean, is all of this, that, from that canal, I mean, is that why that back road floods so bad too?
The.
The back road. I mean, every time you have a heavy rain, you have to shut it down. But is, so they, is all that water goes through there?
No, that water's diverted all the way to the, under the highway right there by Little Kitty Cottage and by Popeye's. That's where all that water goes.
That back road's a ditch basin.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna try to cut it again sometime before, uh, you know, winter gets here, so.
Work on it, try to get it resolved for you, and you're welcome to call me anytime and, and see what to update or where we're at on it, okay?
I guess my question is, um, since we, we're still discussing, um, on project number six, the, uh, alleviating the slough area with this help also that area in that, there too, and where are we, and where do we sustain as far as, I know, um, former representative Hammid came, and he spoke with us saying October, November, and I still, I see where nothing has been done. I don't know if any effort's been put forward, but it looks like if we go on and get this project out the way, it's gonna help other parts of our community.
That project is, is wide open, it's been designed, uh, waiting on, uh, DOTD. We had a meeting, Deborah, what, when did Bryant say, uh, this last meeting we had, we had met last week? I want to say it might be this month or next, about the DOT funding on it, so that would be, uh.
I think my, my, my concerns at that meeting that we had was, um, if I would please be informed on that, and then I wouldn't have to get in these meetings, asking those questions, if I would be informed.
You've got my, you've got my number, uh, when you call me.
No, if you're being informed, call me.
Well, I just, you can always check on it, it goes both ways, so.
Absolutely, but I think I asked that in the meeting for me to be notified pertaining to the slough area, because that's my district.
Okay, when it, when, when the now.
And it's my priority of my concern when I ran my race.
When that, when that, when that announcement's made and they making.
I think it's probably a little bit more important to me than it is to you.
No, it's not, it's, it's not. But anyway, I won't talk anymore, because you're talking over me. Let's move on. All right, any other questions? All right, uh, now we're going on to number seven, board discussion to vote to approve hydro products concerning streets, cameras, and playground. Uh, Alderman Betts, you want to?
Yeah, and then I'll make this, uh, I'll make it short. Um, we have, uh, currently, we got five hundred thousand dollars for the streets, uh, project. I'd like to see us, uh, pledge five hundred thousand dollars more of the hydro money. That'll give us a million dollars to work on the streets. That should get, um, a few more streets done, um, because there's some areas in our town that really need some, some help. I think Lee said they're gonna start over here, back here, but there's some areas in the, in Orchard that, that are, need some help.
Simonton and Miranda are, are gonna bid or do October twenty eighth, and there's a possibility those can be done maybe before, uh, the spring, I mean, the high water in the winter.
But I'd, I'd like to, uh, and, and I can make this in form of a motion that we, we, we do five hundred thousand dollars, um, for that. Um, the cameras, um, talking to, um, Joey and, um, to Bobby, um, one of the things that they were trying to do was trying to get a grant on, on some of this thing, and some of that has, has fallen through. I talked to, um, uh, Bobby about the, the cost and what they wanted to do, um, with that, and, um, make a motion that we pledge three hundred thousand dollars toward the purchase of the, the cameras and the, um, equipment. Bobby says that that's a, he can do it, everything that they want us to do for that, that amount. So, uh, I'd like to pledge up to, um, three hundred thousand on that. There's a, he said there's a possibility it won't be that much, but that would be, um, that would give them, um, uh, enough to do. And then on the playground, um, currently have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was pledged, um, last year. I'd like to see us double that and add another three hundred thousand dollars to that.
Three hundred to the playground?
Add three hundred or?
Or add one fifty, making it three hundred.
No, add three hundred.
So, you make a four fifty total, just in the playground?
Right.
Okay.
Four hundred and fifty thousand for the playground?
Well, we had a hundred and fifty last year, so I'm asking that we pledge three hundred thousand more, which will give us four hundred and fifty thousand.
My concern is, why are we gonna use hydro funds for streets?
Well, some, it's, we have a tax for streets, that's true.
That's what we did, and we didn't use it for three years, so.
Huh?
And we, we didn't use it for three years, but we did nothing. So, that's why we're behind now.
No, that's not why we're behind now on the approach.
Yes, it's part of why we're behind now.
Okay.
So, my point is, why would we use hydro funds for streets?
Okay, then you can tell the other people with broken streets, they'll have to wait till the sales tax gets big, big enough so we can fix them. You tell those people that.
We do what we need to fix our streets.
How mu, how much we got in sales tax funds now? Seven hundred thousand?
I think so, six.
Okay, all right, we fixed, spent five hundred, that's already spent on the streets. We hadn't, this can come up on this, we hadn't got the, uh, bids in yet. Okay, five hundred thousand, you're down to two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred? Huh?
I request that five hundred thousand dollars in hydro funds, not hydro funds, but in the street funds.
Okay, but those, those sales tax funds have a limit to them. They, they, you don't know how much you're gonna get in the sales tax fund. What I'm telling you now, we try to stay not overspend, I mean, you go and approve, that's why they can't get built the year that you put the five hundred thousand in first time, because we didn't have the revenues in the sales tax fund. So, people had to be pushed back, not because we didn't do anything, we had high water for two hundred seventy something, all kind of stuff. It's nobody's fault.
But no, I'm talking about the first three years.
The first three years, we didn't have money, okay?
There's money, because there's a street tax. That's tax money was put somewhere else, let's put it simple.
Well, it was put where it's supposed to go.
It was tax money for streets that wasn't spent, and we get tax money every year.
That's right, we do.
For, not one year, not two years, three years. That's why, no matter what you say, that's why we're behind now. So, you, you.
So, but it's not, it's not against the law, it's not against ordinance for us to use, it's not against ordinance for us, if we, if they want to add that to a street. Are you saying you don't want to add it to the street?
I would say we need to have hydro funds.
Okay, that's fine.
We, we should have been spending that money for those three years we didn't spend it.
What, you go, go ahead and name the years that you're talking about. Now, what years you specifically? Huh?
I said, how much money have you found on infrastructure, on streets, and you said zero, because we had, you just said again, we had no money.
The first two, yeah, the first couple of years, we did not have the money, Alderman Probst, we didn't have the money. Huh?
The money is tax money that's put in hydro funds. No, it's put in streets, street funds.
And it was spent on the street. I promise you, it was all spent on.
But you said we spent no money on streets.
Well, you, I'm saying that the monies were spent taking care of the town business that we needed to, keeping our streets main, maintained what we had. That, we didn't have enough money, we didn't have enough money. Okay, well, you're putting words in my mouth, but we didn't have.
You're working, man, you said it.
Okay.
Okay, you said.
Well, this is not, this is not, this is not for maintenance, this is to, to build the roads.
And why would we use hydro?
Because it's available, and it's something that every.
Did anybody bring that up as far as a suggestion? I brought up just fifty thousand dollars protection integrity of our electrical lines, but truly, I got a zero.
When was that?
Oh, you don't remember that?
I don't remember, because I had on the agenda last time for us to cut every.
You, you, you're not voting, you said you can't do that. I said, then that's, oh.
No, you said you could go on private property. You said you could go on private property, you can't.
You can, but, you can't. Then, let me ask you this, are we on private property at the court house?
That's public property.
That's private, police jury property.
That's, it's, but it's public, it's not, it's not our property.
Another entity's property, aren't we, correct?
What, what part are you talking about?
Aren't we doing electrical work on it? Have we got cooperative endeavor with the police jury? The old court house, have we started, have we got our cooperative endeavor with them? Have we got a cooperative endeavor with the hospital yet?
It's, uh, with the hospital.
That's what we're supposed to give, is a cooperative endeavor.
Yes, the, the hospital's a joint use thing, okay? Stay, stay to the thing you're talking about, as far as the, the trimming of the trees.
No, but you said.
No, I'm gonna go back to trimming the trees.
Part of it, you said I keep going private property to cut trees that protect and integrity of our lines, but yes, we can, because as I talked to Jeremy, you can go on private property. We can't as a city, but you can hire it out, just like the hydro funds can be put out to private entities to go on there and.
Okay, you're gonna pay somebody else to go on private property and cut the tree, and it's okay then? Is that what you're saying?
And that's what I mean.
You can't, you cannot do that.
With hydro funds, why can't you? You're going on private property at the, at the court house, doing what you're doing, and you're not.
Council, would you please clarify that?
Clarify?
No way I can clarify that. I can't follow it, I'm not.
Okay.
I'll be listening, but.
How will you get trees cut that protect and integrity of our lines?
Because you can go up into the tree, and if you have a big tree, that is encroaching over our, if you look up, that's a crow fly, I mean, it, it, up straight up, you can go, even though that tree's on private property, you can protect, you can go into the tree enough that if a limb fell and fell across your cervix, you can go into that. I can't go into that tree.
You can also clear the lines if they're gonna fall on the property, because according to the landowner, if you. You can also clear the lines if they're gonna fall on the property, too, because according to the landowner, you get a right to passage to the property and do that.
You go, cut it what? Down to the, down to the ground?
Take it down.
You can't do that. I'm telling you can't.
I don't.
It's against the law. It's against the law, Alderman Probst. It's against the law. You cannot go, 'cause then you're gonna... Huh?
Show me the law.
I'll be glad to.
I want the law. I want the law, which says you can't cut a tree down. If the person says you can, and you're using a hydro font to do that.
Everybody in town's gonna come in and give you permission to come cut their tree, so they don't have to pay a, a tree, uh, somebody, a tree service.
There's only twenty that, that Jeremy has identified as the integrity of our lines. That's what I'm...
Question.
Okay. All right.
So I have questions.
Now, I'm not through, because I wanna go back to the police jury, because that's all part of it. Have we got a cooperating endeavor?
This, this has, look, Alderman Betts has got, he's, he, this is, he's, he's asked for these things. We're not getting all this.
Yes, that's part of it. Yes, it is part of it.
It's, it's, it's not, look, he's asking you a few...
I'm asking you a question.
All right, Alderman Probst, you're getting close to getting out of order. Alderman, Alderman Betts?
I'm asking you a question.
I know.
Go ahead, do it.
I am gonna, 'cause look, I've asked you, you're out of order. Okay, here's your warning, Alderman Probst. Next time you, I, I will remove you. I promise you will, until you can restore order. Alderman Betts is talking about five hundred thousand for the street. Just say yes or no, if you wanna do it or not. The other thing is, is two hundred, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars for the...
Excuse me, but I'm a citizen of the day, and I think you're all wrong on that. Give me a second.
Well, this, this, okay, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, that'd be fine. That'd be fine. All right, let's, let's go back. Let's, all right, listen.
So are we still discussing? 'Cause I have some, uh, questions that's been brought to my attention pertaining to item number six. I imagine John can answer them.
Which one? Okay, which one?
Okay, it says, um, who's gonna maintain the Riverwalk cameras? Uh, that's one of the questions. Um, it says, what happened to the money from the parks, from the hydro royalties, and why is it no longer on the table? How much did the riverfront cameras cost? Are the cameras on the riverfront functioning? Who monitors those cameras? Do they record? Or they use issued tickets to people littering or fighting or illegal activity in the area? Um, number three is, what is the cost of installing the cameras? How many will the town receive? Will the cameras record? Will every street have one? Who will monitor these cameras? We will have to hire new people for that. Will they be used to ticket illegal activity like littering, destruction, or property, et cetera? Have, um, number four is, have, having, where I read, how can citizens assure that administrator is not going to use the cameras to further monitor or harass citizens they deem to be troublemakers, is what they sent to me. And this came from a citizen in my district. Presenting to the cameras.
The riverfront has already got cameras on it. And Bobby, you wanna liberate, I mean, elaborate on the, the riverfront cameras? We...
We have, uh, nine cameras on the riverfront, from, uh, the riverbank to the bathrooms, down to the, uh, boat launch, it's southern of town. Five of them work. The other four do not. They do not have those cameras in the life. They will not repair them. So we got with the company to get them replaced, with newer cameras that aren't in the life. We're also gonna add three cameras to, uh, monitor the water wells, 'cause we have nothing for security for water wells right now. And, uh, I can't answer some of your questions, 'cause I'm not gonna be the one monitoring them.
Who's gonna monitor them? PD would.
Big Brother or anything like that. That's...
And honestly, they don't monitor. They might have them there in their office, but they do record in case something does happen. They can go back and make reference to them.
They do go to a DVR that is recorded. So if an incident occurs, you can go back and review the video to get any information off of it that's, that's...
And, and...
I don't remember the rest of your questions you were creating.
Well, the main thing is, is what we're, what, what we had recently talked about, and this was a couple of years ago, was maybe cameras at the time, there were people coming into the neighborhoods and they were breaking into cars, and they might've been from out of town. And all we had recommended was, at the entrance up to neighborhoods, not every street, but entrances, to have maybe a camera that would catch license tags and things of that nature. So if you did have an event where somebody was broken into, you could maybe possibly apprehend the people by having some video surveillance and, uh, footage out there that might apprehend whoever might break into our citizens' vehicles.
And there are two, uh, in this project, there are two license plate reader cam, regular cameras. One going, or pointed to where you can see the traffic coming into town, and one seeing the traffic going out now. So they were supposed to be, uh, right there. One of them's right across the street from the Sam Bar, and the other one is right in the corner of, uh, Louisiana, I think Linder or Linden Street, Linden Street. And those would be looking at highway.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Any other Alderman have questions?
Um, I'll just say this, and this would be all that I have to say pertaining to that, this matter. I, I support the efforts in the, the use of money throughout the whole town of Adalia, 'cause I wanna see everything better. But I don't wanna just support it in one particular area. I wanna support it throughout the whole entire town of Adalia. I wanna see money spent through the whole city. I don't want one street, one side of town to look better than another side of town. And we gonna spend this money, because that ultimately, at the end of the day, even though the board approves it, the man has the dictatorship to say it's spent on Viking Shit Street versus Laurel Street. So equally and fairly, I wanna see the funds of, the allocated funds that we approved tonight, if they're approved, are, are spent equally and fair through our whole entire town of Adalia, and not just in particular areas versus other areas.
That's the way it was discussed. That's the way it would be...
That's what I'm saying, and I was, I was still talking.
It's not a dictatorship. This is something we want for all of our areas of town.
Well, that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm justifiably saying, that that's what I wanna see.
It's gonna be for all the citizens.
Is made, that we make sure we do it throughout the whole town of Adalia, and just not in particular areas of Adalia, the whole community as a whole. Um, and I know this has nothing to do with it, but we had some other things that we discussed, and we talked about, once again, the slough pumping station, or whatever we're gonna do with that project. I mean, that's, that's already been approved and discussed, but, I mean, you, you stated earlier that we moving on and we getting things done. I, I just wanna see it being done. It's, I know for six years I've been peddling and talking about this. And once it gets done, you don't have to hear my voice anymore pertaining to the matter, because it's over with. So the sooner it gets done, or something gets done, because you're hearing my voice, but I'm hearing my citizens' voice. I'm hearing them constantly calling me when it floods and it rains, saying, Robert, come look at my yard. And, 'cause those are the people that voted for me and put me in office, and I have to answer to those people.
All right, Alderman Garner, would you...
I would say the way it's going, we're probably still be sitting here meeting when they...
Yeah, that's, that's, we're gonna move, let's move on to Alderman Betts has, has brought up the three things. We talked about the streets. We talked about the cameras. Another deal was the playground, adding three hundred thousand to the playground. Now, if, if the council wanna take each one of these individually and, and vote on them, or... How do you wanna do that? Huh?
Individually.
All right. So is, any other, any, y'all have any comments before we, I guess, we call for motion on each one? All right. Can I hear a motion on the five hundred thousand for the streets to be added to the streets, uh, repairs?
I'll make it.
Motion made by Alderman Betts. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Alderman, uh, Smith. Let's do a roll call, please.
Motion offered by, um, Alderman Betts to add five hundred thousand dollars to streets to bring total to one million. It was second by Alderman Smith. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderwoman Demby?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Probst? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that carries?
That does carry with yeas and being four and nays being one.
All right, the next thing we have is the three hundred thousand for the cameras, which will be, uh, townwide. Uh, and we'll, uh, Bobby and Joey and we'll all get together with police, and y'all can come up with the strategic points that need to be to cover all of our neighborhoods. Uh, do I hear a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Betts. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Alderman, uh, Smith. All right, roll call.
All right, motion made by Alderman Betts, um, for three hundred thousand dollars for cameras and equipment. Second by Alderman Smith. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderwoman Demby?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
No.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
All right, that carries with four yeas and one a.
Okay, and then the third thing we have is, uh, do I hear a motion for the three hundred thousand to add to the playground?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts. Do I hear a second?
Second.
That is, Alderman Demby, did you say? Alderman Demby was the second. We will do roll call.
Motion offered by Alderman Betts to add three hundred thousand dollars to the playground to make it four hundred and fifty thousand. Second by Alderwoman Demby. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderwoman Demby?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
All right, that carries with five.
Okay, all right, thank y'all very much. Uh, moving on, number eight is discussion vote to seek the approval for the advertisement of bids for sidewalk repairs. Uh, this is in relation to the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's in the budget. Uh, we, uh, we have, our code enforcement has gone all over town and identified sidewalks that need repair. I do wanna give you a little bit of background. Our, our ordinance calls for that sidewalks and neutral areas are usually, are, are supposed to be kept and maintained by the adjacent landowner. This is this way all through, all your municipalities, all over the state, and actually all over the country. That is how it, it is most people's muni codes read. Our muni codes, uh, they actually have it placed in the wrong area of our code. But the maintenance and repair of that is supposed to be on the adjacent landowner. Let me give you, for example, and we looked at a lot of, you know, some case law with this. You know, that if someone has an oak tree and it's on their house side of a sidewalk, and that oak tree grows into that sidewalk, those roots make that sidewalk jump up that far. I mean, it's, and we have that all over town. You know, what did the town do that caused that sidewalk to do that? The town, it was nothing they did. So it's always, and a lot of times when, uh, some, somebody did file a lawsuit, it usually went against the homeowner's insurance, because the town didn't act, get, and go in there and tear that sidewalk up. It was something that was on that, that, that landowner planted that caused it to go up. But you get into a lot of things. You can see that why the, the, you know, the code, muni codes read, where, you know, the, the care and maintenance is for, uh, for them to take care of it. However, it is on the right of way. Do we, can we have, take, can we fix those? Yes, we can, you know? And that's one of the reasons, uh, the hundred, uh, they did put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget. And we're, we're identifying those, and we're gonna put them out for bid, how much it's gonna take to fix those. And we've got a, it's about ninety places throughout town that have sidewalks that need repair. Now, I do wanna clarify something else up. There's an ordinance that's, it's on, uh, it's three seventy-one about people knowing, you know, 'cause I, I'm glad the stump's gone too, trust me, praise the Lord. But actually, that is the, uh, direct responsibility of the landowner to take care of that. Uh, and we have an ordinance three seventy-one that addresses the neutral ground between the sidewalks and the street. That's the neutral ground. And the citizens are responsible to trim their trees off of that. Now, the town would go in and trim it off the street right, I mean, if above the street, we'd go as far into the street, uh, and, and trim it so our trucks can get up and down the street safely, or our citizens can get up and down. But it is the responsibility of anything going over a sidewalk or over their own house with these trees, it is the landowner's responsibility. And one of the things that I did go back, uh, Malcolm Barlow, one of the longtime citizens here, I asked him, he's been an engineer, they had been an engineer for, uh, Town of Adalia for a long time. And I said, who planted the trees all throughout town? He said, Town of Adalia never planted a tree, uh, you know, on these streets or, or anything like that. And the ordinance calls for, you can't plant anything within fifteen feet of a corner of a street, fifteen feet. The stump was within fifteen feet of that. It was cut down by the town, 'cause I'm sure that tree became a danger to citizens on the street, 'cause it, I mean, it looked like it was right there. It had to be hanging all in the street. So I'm sure that the town took it down to the stump to where it wouldn't be a danger. And there's plenty of stumps all in that area that were probably cut for the same reason. Now, back to the sidewalks. This is, this is money for that. This is just getting, letting y'all know, we're putting it out for bid. We've identified all these places, and they're everywhere all over town where there are sidewalks. And so, is there any questions from the council on this?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
A hundred and fifty thousand, is that gonna be sufficient to, uh, take care of ninety sidewalks?
I'm, I'm hoping...
Some of them are in deplorable condition.
Yeah, I, I'm hoping so. I, I mean, we won't know till we get bids in. We're gonna, we've identified the sidewalks. We'll, we'll, we'll find out who the contractors are local, and maybe ask for an outside contractor to come in and give us bids, and then we'll just have to go from there. Yeah, is that something...
But what I'm saying, if a hundred and fifty thousand is not enough, will we be able to put more money in? Like we've added money everywhere else, we'll be able to add money...
Well, we would come back and ask for that.
Okay.
So, so my thing is, uh, I think I was the one who made the re- recommendation for the hundred and fifty thousand for the sidewalks. And ultimately, it was for repair and for new sidewalks, because it was brought up pertaining to identifying areas where people may not want sidewalks. This is a practice that we did. I think John elaborated on it in the past. When they first put sidewalks, some people didn't want sidewalks. But I know all through District Two, I can say, people want sidewalks. So I don't know in other districts who don't, but in District Two, we want sidewalks. So my one fifty that I added wasn't just for repair only. I just wanna state that on tonight. I mean, is, is that what the board wanted to vote, just to use it for repair? Or are we gonna actually go in and put sidewalks through different districts that need sidewalks as well?
I can tell you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars ain't gonna touch that.
And I think that's what, that's what Alderwoman Demby elaborated on earlier.
But I would also, I would want a referendum of all those citizens that saying they want sidewalk. I've been, the reason why I've been, in the mornings, I've been walking the orchard area and, and going through there, and honestly, I walked on the sidewalks. And I'll be honest with you, I felt a little creepy, because I felt like I was in somebody's very front yard and encroaching on them. And actually had two people come out and say, what's that guy doing walking on our sidewalk? You know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, some people just don't wanna sidewalk, depending on going right through the...
I can't speak of the orchard area, 'cause that's not my district.
Okay.
But I can speak of District Two, and most of the citizens that I have talked to in that district has stated and said that they do want sidewalks.
And we, and we'll, we'll address that. We'll certainly reach out to them and see who they are.
Right, and in District One, you know, we, we had some folk come here, um, asking about sidewalks to be completed. Well, it had begun, but had not been completed. So in District One, there are several, um, areas where sidewalk is needed, and, and of course, the constituents wants sidewalks.
So that's why I was...
So is that, is it a way that we can, um, I guess, get a, a vote from the board to change this up and be able to add more money on tonight? Um, I think it takes all of the, all of them to agree in order for us to, for number eight, um, just like John did, and, and number seven, uh, where we can go and, and give a, a suggested amount, so we can, um, add more money to the hundred and fifty thousand for a more feasible way of doing sidewalks. I know, like Alderwoman Demby says, she needs some to be completed in her district, and I need some add-ons in my district, and, and not just repair by itself.
All right, here's what I'd like to do. I'd like, look, let's go ahead and, and get this approved, see how much money you do spend, see what you got left over, and then identify, once you get a list of where, what streets and where you want your sidewalks, get with your constituents and find that out, and bring it back to us. Uh, and we'll look as well with that.
So are you gonna say you're gonna put this on next month's meeting?
Well, if we, I don't know if we get bids yet back on the, on the sidewalks.
I'm saying, put it on next month's meeting to, to, to go back to the table to discuss adding more funds for sidewalks.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would do that if you have a number, and what we, if you know how much it's gonna cost.
No, I, I'm, I'm saying normally, okay, I can come, I can come with a number.
All right. Okay, any other questions? All right, do I hear a motion that we seek the approval for advertisement for the bids for fixing sidewalks? Motion made by Alderman Probst. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Demby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number nine, we're gonna discuss and vote to seek the approval for advertisement of bids for a new ambulance, and, uh, Dana, I mean...
Yes, Mr. Ray. Um, our ambulance, um, first of all, I'd like to introduce our, uh, E. M. S. Wardinger, Captain Keen. He's doing a great job for us. Um, our one ambulance that we have is six years old. And it's starting to cost us more money for maintenance, because it's very few miles every night, feet to the full, 'cause we're trying to make time. So what we'd like to do is, uh, do some specs and put them out for bid, to see what, uh, one ambulance, new ambulance we caused. And anybody got any questions from, from there?
Would this be like through the tax?
Yes, I, I would, I would assume that, but I...
Yes, that's, that's the, there is a tax for that. And what they would do, they're gonna take the, uh, they would actually get a vehicle, and they take the, the, uh, the unit that's on the truck, and they would act... the unit that's on the truck, and they would actually refurbish it and bring it up to current, uh.
That's what you thought I'd do, right?
We're, we're gonna see what, one versus the other, as far as having one spec out, and the one we'd have to get before we turn our ambulance over to get that changed.
And we would be able to get fun, I mean, we could put that up for sale, the other one, once it's, uh. But I, I think, I think our citizens' safety would be, so we want y'all to be safe, and we want our citizens to make sure they got something good to be transporting.
We want to be able to give our citizens a best service we can.
That's right, and y'all do a good job.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, do I hear a motion?
Motion made.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, number.
Mayor, what was the motion?
Uh, for them to, uh, go ahead and, and get advertisement bids for a new ambulance. Okay, all right.